Universalist Fellowship and a pledge will be offered after the invocation by Carolyn Dominic, United States Air Force retired, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you. I am going to be reading a paradoxical commandment that is attributed to Mother Teresa, who is now a saint, she's just been beatified, but it really wasn't written by her. It was written by Dr. Kent Keith, who happened to be a Rhodes Scholar, has a bachelor's degree from Harvard, has a master's degree in politics from Oxford, and a doctorate from the University of Southern California. And this is how the paradoxical commandment goes. People are illogical, unreasonable, and self-centered. Love them anyway. If you do good, people will accuse you of selfish ulterior motives. Do good anyway. If you are successful, you will win false friends and true enemies. Succeed anyway. The good you do today may be forgotten tomorrow. Do good anyway. Honesty and frankness make you vulnerable. Be honest and frank anyway. Biggest men and women with the biggest ideas can be shot down by the smallest men and women with the smallest minds. Think big anyway. People will favor underdogs, but follow only the top dogs. Fight for a few underdogs anyway. What you spend years building up may be destroyed overnight. Build anyway. People really need help, but may attack you if you do help them. Help people anyway. Give the world the best you have, and you'll get kicked in the teeth. Give the world the best you have anyway. Thank you for your service to Washington County, one of the greatest counties in the country.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Michael.
Profound thought. I appreciate it.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We all appreciate that, and especially it strikes, I think, a resonant chord with us as we get ready to celebrate our nation's birthday and the Declaration of Independence on July the 4th, 1776. And so, great time in our country. Today's consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first item of business on the regular agenda.
With that, Mr. Chairman, if everyone is okay, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with Item A, consideration of auditor-approved claims for payment for June 19th through 2019, June 19th, 2019 through July 2nd, 2019. B, consideration of regular commission meeting minutes of June 4th, 2019, and June 18th, 2019. C, consideration of administrative adjustments of personal property. And consideration, D, consideration of applications for property tax abatement. Item E, consideration of disposal surplus property from the Washington County Sheriff's Office. And Item F, acknowledgement of the publishing notice of adoption of ordinance number 2019-1139-0 on Saturday, June 22nd, 2019. That is my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Iverson, Commissioner Almquist. All in support of adopting today's consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Today's regular agenda items for consideration consists of Item 1, consideration of purchase requests. Ray, would you like to walk us through those?
The first one we have is for the library. It is to update the building access and security, new key cards and such. The total for that, for all the branches, which includes labor, is $23,977.74, which is an updated cost from what you originally had. The second one is for fuel for the roads department, and a total of $20,248.73. And then the last one is for the sheriff's office. It's just, it's a blanket purchase order for commissary items, and a total of $45,000. Unless there's any questions, that's all I have.
Thank you, Ray. Any questions for Ray?
No.
Any discussion?
Straightforward.
I move that we approve the purchase request.
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All in support of approval of the purchase request as presented by Ray, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number two, this is a public hearing to open the 2019 Washington County budget to update funds 11, 25, 26, 28, and 29. I would like to invite our clerk auditor to come up and introduce the topic, and then we will open it up for the formal public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner. This budget opening is kind of being driven mainly by court support services. Charmaine has obtained two new grants, and so that affects her budget kind of significantly. So that was kind of the driving force to open the budget at this particular time. But while we were opening it, there's a few things that we needed to clear up and update while we, as long as we were doing the advertising and doing that. So just briefly, I'll talk about, I'll go in the order of the funds. Fund 11, you'll remember that we had a discussion with Ron Whitehead about increasing the staff with the road department, but we wanted to wait until we had the final results of the BNC road money for 2018 before we made a decision on that. And that information became available February, March, and so three people were hired there. So we're updating that budget to increase wages and benefits for the three new hires in the road department. I'll kind of go out of order a little bit. Fund 25, 26, and 29 are somewhat interrelated with the tourism office, the regional park, and the Dixie Center. So we have made, we just updated those three funds with information that we have now that we didn't have when we prepared the budget and approved that back in December. There's new, there's new things that we did, new events, new venues that we're helping with the tourism office. We're doing a little bit things different. We have a trails grant in the Confluence Park in Fund 26. And the Dixie Center, how they fund their bonds is kind of tied into both 25 and 26. So that's kind of the gist of those, of those three. Then in 20, if you look in 28, that's, all the changes there are related to the two grants. I don't know all the nomenclature here. CJEG and CCJJ, they're both, it totals about $325,000 in grant revenue, and that has been offset with expenses down in court support services. But in a nutshell, that's kind of what we're going to accomplish here with this.
Okay. Thank you, Kim. Eric, do we need a formal motion to go into the hearing process?
Not to, you don't, you can, depending on how you'd like to have it. You don't need one to open the public hearing or close it, but you can do one, but then you'll need a formal motion afterwards whether to accept these, whether to budget or not.
Right. Okay. So we'll do it without a formal motion, and I will invite any of the public that would like to comment on the proposed changes to the budget. And if there are any, if they would please step to the microphone and state their name, we will be happy to listen to any of your thoughts or concerns.
Charmaine, would you mind explaining these grants? Because there's been a lot of discussion about where the revenue was going to come from, if we were going to get the revenue.
Charmaine, since the hearing is open, we'll let you state your name.
Yeah, if nobody wants to talk, we'll just start dragging people up here.
I didn't know if I should bring my milkshake or not. I am Charmaine Gold. I am the Washington County Court Support Services Program Manager. And this last legislative session, Representative Lowry Snow and I worked on a request for proposal for some supervision money. And we have significant information and data specs that show we have an abundant amount of high-risk population, that we had minimal specialty court supervision agents supervising those applicants. So with that, we were allocated $500,000 for Washington County. Our intent is to integrate services with the Washington County Sheriff's Office, and we've been working with Kim and their office, showing the breakdown of those funds and what it would kind of look like in the development of that merge.
Okay. And for those that might be watching on TV, can you give us kind of a real high-level, not more than 60-second explanation of what it is that you're in charge of doing?
Okay. That's impossible, but I will try. We've come together as a justice system, and I partner with all local entities that are involved in that. My direct oversight is Washington County Attorney Brock Bownap and the Washington County Commission. With that being said, we've developed a collected system to be able to help individuals that are in the justice system to lower the recidivism rate. What does that mean? Development resources, connect systems, database sharing, collect information, and of course, increased funding and state oversight with some additional funding coming down to Washington County.
We're mainly talking about individuals that are incarcerated because of drug use and addiction issues, right?
Yes. And, you know, Brock has great insight about that because, let's say if you've got somebody on, out of the district court, class A misdemeanor and above, it could be a charge that's not related to drug at that time, but we do a pre-trial evaluation on them to get a very individualized recommendation to the court to see if there is an underlying element for that cause.
Substance abuse or something.
Mental illness.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Which we have about 95% collected as a whole that are diagnosing at mental illness and/or dual diagnosis substance abuse.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you for your hard work and great explanation.
Thank you. Thanks for the milk.
You bet.
Well, that's Commissioner Almquist that he was worried about us getting too hot today.
For the red, white, and blue.
It's, oh, well, no, no. I just think it was patriotic. And it was a hot day, so why not?
Yeah.
Even Maury, even Maury Gotti's.
Anyone else that would like to speak? Hearing and seeing no action, we will close the public hearing, and then is there a resolution?
We usually don't do those per the budget.
The changes as presented. Okay, I would entertain such a motion.
Chairman, I'll move that we adopt the changes that have been shown to the county budget to update funds 11, 25, 26, 28, and 29.
Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
Thank you. All in support of accepting the changes recommended by clerk auditor Kim Hafen as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number three, consideration of assisting Enterprise City in backlog road maintenance.
Mr. Chairman, this time in discussing it with the mayor of Enterprise and also talking with our Public Works Department about their scheduling and about getting the material here and whether or not the county was even in a position to do it, especially this year, I'd like to make a motion that we table item three.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made and seconded to table item number three, consideration of assisting Enterprise City in backlog road maintenance. All in support of tabling, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number four, consideration of ordinance number 2019-1137-0, an ordinance rezoning a certain portion of Washington County from C3 general commercial zone to the RA1 residential agricultural one-acre minimum lot size zone. Scott, could you walk us through that again?
Yes. Back in May 14th, I believe it was, in the regularly scheduled, my tongue's frozen, planning commission meeting, the planning commission reviewed a zone change request as stated to rezone property in Vail. It's 1.5 acres in size from C3 general commercial to RA1. After holding a public hearing and having discussion, a motion was made by the planning commission to deny the zone change request. The motion was seconded, and other than Mark Owens, who abstained from the vote, it was unanimous to recommend denial of the zone change. This item came before the planning, or before the county commission a couple meetings ago, and it was tabled to allow staff to look more into it and the pros and cons of commercials of rezoning commercial property. There's been some discussion and debate on it, and is back before the county commission at this time.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's a good summary of what's happened. So, Mr., is any thoughts and discussion?
Boy, this is a tough one, because, you know, as you look at, you know, you want to be able to allow people to do what they want to do, but unfortunately, to spot zone or to change this or to override the planning commission, I think the planning commission was very deliberate in their thought process. It's, it's clear that residential is not allowed in a commercial zone, even though there is existing commercial that, or existing residential that's been grandfathered in this zone. I'm not sure that a whole lot has changed that, unless we, because the problem is if you allow one spot zone, then zones really start to not have any real meaning. I don't know. It's, I've been deliberating back and forth on this quite a bit.
I appreciate your thoughts. My concern is if this were the end lot that formed the boundary between the C3 and the general residential area, I would be in full support of it, but it's in the middle of it. And so, since other businesses may locate at that time in the future, I have concerns with animals, some of the other things that we allow in our residential zones that may be incompatible uses. And frankly, I'm a little bit concerned that allowing a resident in a commercial zone, for this instance, we have to change the ordinance for all commercial zones, and I'm not sure that we've thought about how that could impact everywhere else where that could become applicable instead of, I guess we could spot zone or change it. But anyway, I share your concerns, Commissioner Almquist.
You know, we all took a field trip up there with many of the governor's office and as well as others in our community, and looked at the fact that this was the outer reaches of one of the opportunity zones. And some of the things that an opportunity zone affords, like Vail, the granted, many times they have to come in for a zone change to get to C3 or C2 in an opportunity zone. In other words, they're taking from residential to give it. In this particular case, it already exists, and whatever the history of this parcel is to be C3, and what would surprise most people, because they would expect C3 to be more industrial, not industrial, but at least more commercial, for whatever reason, it could play well into the hand of an opportunity zone to help fail. And therefore, to put a house in the middle would complicate what we're looking at there. And zoning's for a reason. The right thing that they want to do is have a house and have animals and things like that. They probably need to find the right parcel to do that that has an existing zone that allows it.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion? Or further discussion? Seems like we're all sharing a common concern.
Well, and our, just for the record, our common concern is that we want people to be able to reach their goals and dreams. That's the absolute truth. But government is organized so that we don't infringe on the rights of others as well, since property rights exist on both sides of the field. This could have created some, as has been said, some other issues for future development on both sides of that. Having said that, in full respect of their right to have come in and our appreciation for such, I move that we deny the request for an ordinance change rezoning a certain portion of C3 zone to an actual residential one-acre minimum lot size zone in the Vail area. Item number 2019-1137-0.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
The motion has been made and seconded to deny approval of ordinance number 2019-1137-0. All in support of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Scott, can I tell you how appreciative we are of the maps that you've provided and so that we can see the overall scene? We've looked at them before, we realize, but having them in the packet is also wonderful. So whoever's to thank for that, you, your staff.
Thank you.
Diane, whoever.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Item number five, consideration of ordinance number 2019-1140, an ordinance amending the term of appointment for county constables.
Eric? Commissioners, this is a relatively simple matter. This year, the state legislature put in the state code that constable term limits are six years, or their terms are for six years. And so this just updates our county code to match the state code requirement. The way that, we have a couple of constables appointed. I don't believe this will impact either of them. Their terms will stay at four years until they run, and then reappoint them or appoint new constables.
Okay, so we don't automatically extend their terms two years? They just, how would that work?
So, so the way the statute reads that was passed, if they were appointed after July 1st, 2008, then they, then their terms are for six years. But I don't, I think the public parties were appointed before then.
They were.
So they just finished their four-year term.
Gotcha.
Okay, thank you. Good explanation. Discussion?
Well, it's pretty, we're just complying with state law, so, yeah, I'll just go.
Make a motion and support.
I'll make a motion, we deny the, no. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we comply with state law by adopting ordinance 2019-1140, an ordinance amending the term appointment for county constables.
Second.
Okay. All in support of the ordinance 2019-1140, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number six, consideration of ordinance number 2019-1141-0, an ordinance amending beer licenses and sales.
Looks like it has me down there, but Eric.
So commissioners, the way that our county code has read in the past, single event licenses that would allow alcohol to be served at an event, similar to how George Fest has done in downtown St. George for the last year or so, have been prohibited in the unincorporated areas of the county, and likewise, were also prohibited in any public park areas owned by the county. This change would allow for single special event licenses to be allowed if they were approved by the commission and carry that over so that, basically, when we talk about public parks, we're generally talking about the fairgrounds.
It would allow for structured events in those public parks, but it wouldn't allow next weekend, somebody to go to the park in Vail and start drinking beer.
Correct. So it allows for single-issue events, and to get the license or the permit for those, there's a state permitting process that requires site plan, security, they have a number of requirements, and all of that would have to be met before someone could.
Thank you for the explanation.
And just for the public's information, we've had a work meeting, I think at least one work meeting, where we had law enforcement and other staff involved expressing their different concerns. I think a lot of people are familiar with the street festival that St. George City puts on once a month, and they have a similar, they allow alcohol to be served, and in that environment, it's structured, people are able to drink alcohol but not intoxicated. It's worked out really well. Law enforcement had no real concern with any sort of security that might happen. And as the popularity of our fairgrounds grows, more and more events would like to come in, and they would like to have the opportunity for the people and participants to have alcohol or to serve alcohol, and this would allow.
Even if it were a catered event at the Graft building, for example, our previous ordinance would not have allowed that, so.
Okay. So this is just allowing that, so. With that, I will make a motion that we adopt the beer ordinance.
Amending beer licenses and sales.
Is that what we're doing? We're, you know, I don't know why, it just, it's always interesting. Of course, I don't, you know, the state of Utah runs liquor stores, so I don't know why, why we should think it's humorous to pass a beer license, but. Anyway, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt resolution number 2019-1141-0, an ordinance amending beer licenses and sales in our ordinance.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded in support of 2019-1142-41-0. All in support of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Chair, you might stress that the ordinance still states that they have to have retail licenses, they have to be cleared, they have to have the food establishment to a certain extent, although this creates a new opportunity, they still have the age limit requirements, all of those things are still in.
Has to be completely covered with state law.
Yep.
Okay. Number eight, consideration of resolution number R 2019-2489, a resolution approving, oh, excuse me, it's number seven, 2019-1142-0, an ordinance including the Washington County Council of Governments in the county code. Now, this really does sound like a good Eric topic.
Yeah. So this is kind of another cleanup issue, commissioners, but there's one thing that we're changing in here. So in 2009, the county created the Council of Government, and that's a body that's made up by the county commissioners and the mayors, all of the mayors in the county, and they meet periodically and oversee the distribution of corridor preservation funds, which are funds that come in and are tagged for the purchase of right-of-ways or for the purchase of future right-of-ways. So those funds were used to purchase part of the corridor along Bluff Street for the Bluff Street expansion, for example. So the COG was created and did that. When it was created by ordinance, we didn't put it in the county code. We have a section of the county code where we have different boards that are created by the county commission, and for one reason or another, this wasn't put in there. So, so our office is just proposing that this goes into the county code so that anybody who wants to know what is the Washington County Council of Governments can easily find that and see what its duties are. So most of the language is just taken from the 2009 ordinance. There is one change where we've added an additional duty to the Council of Governments, where they would oversee the implementation, expansion. where they would oversee the implementation, expansion, and ongoing operation of public transit, um, that, that comes in on a regional basis. So, and this is kind of tied to discussions that have been had, had by the Dixie Transportation Executive Committee, um, by the Washington County Council of Governments about a tran- a bus line from St. George to Springdale. And the mayors have all recommended that COG, council of governments, kind of provide some oversight to that, just like they have done with the corridor preservation. So this just sticks that duty in there and then sticks, puts it in the county code.
Okay, thank you for the explanation. Uh, discussion?
Well, I think it's, uh, as we've had a discussion, I think we had a meeting in Huracan, uh, was it last week, uh, where we, we discussed this with, uh, mayors and city council members about, uh, the council of government serving as the, the framework to govern, uh, the transit system plan to set up. And so I think it, I think it's going to be a, an important board as far as looking at transit in our county and transportation issues.
I know that at that meeting, uh, last week, was advertised as a COG meeting, uh, all of the mayors present spoke in support of it. And so it seems to have a broad underlying level of support, which I think is critical for the direction we're headed.
Absolutely. Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt a language that's included in ordinance 2019-1142-0, including the Washington County Council of Governments in the county code. And I want to pay, uh, particular attention to the item that clarifies that there's no compensation, so this isn't a, now, somebody might be compensated already for their position, this is not an additional compensation.
Not a compensated board.
That's my motion.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second that motion.
Motion has been made and seconded in support of 2019-1142-0, an ordinance including the Washington County Council of Government in the county code. All in support of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number eight, consideration of resolution number R 2019-2489, a resolution approving a complete reduction of past property taxes for certain parcels located in the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve. Eric, what are we doing there?
Commissioners, I'm glad I'm getting all the easy ones today. Um, a little bit of history on this one. The, when the Washington County Red Cliffs Desert Reserve was created 20 plus years ago, there were several private property owners who said, hey, I'm willing to put my land into that reserve with the understanding that over time, the federal government, um, or federal funds would be given to the state to purchase that land. Um, I don't think anybody at the time that that happened anticipated that 25 years later we would still have property inside the reserve purchased, but, but that's where we're at. We still have a handful of property owners and, and a few hundred acres in the reserve of private property and then a larger piece of state trust land property. Um, so then, due to bankruptcy and creditor issues, a couple of property owners became new property owners, the property in the reserve about seven or eight years ago. They came to the county at that time and, and negotiated a tax deferment deal where they said, hey, we're going to work really hard to get this property out. Um, we, we'd like to pay minimal taxes every year and then pay kind of a lump sum property tax at the end when we sell or exchange that property out. And the county commission at the time signed off on that. Um, those property owners have come back now and, and are basically saying, hey, it's been several years, we've tried really, really hard to get this property out, we don't want it, own property in the reserve anymore, we can't, can't use the property, they can't go off trail on the property, um, they obviously can't build or develop the property, it's, it's out there in our public park, basically.
And it is benefiting the habitat and the tortoise.
Yep, it's, it's, it's key to the tortoise. It also, um, the fact that we have that reserve is what allows us to have an instant take permit that allows development to happen in other areas of the county. So there, there is a public benefit to their land being in there. And, um, so they, they would like to now have the county commission just not be charging property taxes on, well, not be charging the, the lump sum at the end. They said they're fine still paying the, the minimal amount they've been paying every year, but they'd like that lump sum to go away and that's what's before you for consideration. They've applied for that and now it's up to you.
Commissioners, I'd like to make a comment. Uh, we had a meeting with the school district, who, the entity that benefits the most from this, and I've had also side conversations with the mayors of our larger cities as well, Hurricane, St. George, and Ivans in particular, and, uh, asked them their thoughts and feelings on this. And after explaining that these individuals have had that property in the reserve, that unless it's bisected by a recognized trail, they can't even walk on their property legally. And there's immense public benefit that has come from, uh, having an HCP which allows all of the other privately held land to be developed, that is a substantial public benefit. Uh, I'm pleased to report that, uh, the school district supported our, uh, effort to, uh, address some of the concerns that have been raised by the property owners and, uh, the mayors that I've had a chance to visit with have also been supportive of that. So I, I personally feel this is a step in the right direction that, uh, since 1989, when these properties become encumbered, uh, it's 30 years and although the HCP hasn't been in place for that full time, uh, their property has been encumbered to one extent or another since the declaration of endangerment, uh, the desert tortoise.
And with good reason, the property owners have kind of, uh, felt that the property tax assessment was, you know, kind of adding injury on top of the burden they're already carrying. And so I, I think as we've worked with them, trying to facilitate exchanges, this is something very important, continue to have that, to help them get this property out and, and they've made comments.
I think this makes it easier.
Easier, because what they, what they can now do, or they'll feel better about donating part of their land and good to work with as far as that goes, so.
Okay. Well, it stands to reason that it would be a slow process since it involves the tortoise.
Yeah, you know, that, you know, I've never really thought of it that way, but, you know, I've always wondered why everything do, dealing with the HCP was so hard and slow, but now, you know, it is about tortoise habitat.
Fitting, fitting.
It is. And we only moved six months out of the year, you know.
That's right.
Hybrid, hibernating.
You know, there's something that's an interesting side note here too, and that 20 years ago, St. George City owned a parcel up in the Habitat area that was part of a three-way trade so that Webb Hill would become permanent open space in the city of St. George and that the Desert Canyons area, which was held by SITLA and others, would then be a suitable private trade for Webb Hill in order for this land to be freed up on, uh, in the Red Cliffs Reserve. If you followed all of that, the point I'm trying to make is Webb Hill is completely open to the public and go and hike all over it, whereas there's some limitation on what you can do inside the reserve, especially on these parcels. But, um, everyone thinks, well, they locked up a bunch of land. Well, the whole idea was that it was to be preserved, but at the same time, it opened up a whole bunch of land on Webb Hill for public use and enjoyment. So there, there was a little bit of trade off there.
Thank you.
I'll make the motion on item eight, that we consider the resolution number 2019-2489, approving a complete reduction of past property taxes for certain parcels located in the Red Cliffs Desert Reserve. And by clarification, that also meant the end lump sum, right, Eric?
Yeah, so that's.
It's part of the, I've read the thing and it's.
Yeah, I, I was thinking about that if we were, so they, these, the, the two property owners have paid the annually assessed tax.
Yes.
What they're asking for is for the lump sum. One of them has a lump sum that's, that's owing now and the other one doesn't, but is under contract, there would be lump sums in the future. They would like that to just go away.
That's what it says in here, but my motion includes that as well.
And I will second that motion.
Okay, all in support of the amended motion clarifying the lump sum amount, uh, in resolution R 2019-2489, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number nine, consideration of resolution number R 2019-2490, a resolution appointing a board member to the Southern Utah Shooting Sports Park Advisory Board.
So, Mr. Chairman, we, um, as the title says, we have an advisory board to help us, uh, out at the Shooting Sports Park and we have a vacancy in, uh, that belongs to one of the venues out there or it's filled by one of the. So we have the name of, uh, Jim, or Jill Hamlin is, um, been willing to, uh, step up and, and fill that position and I'd like to make a motion that we, um, um.
Point.
Appoint, that was the word, appoint Jill Hamlin to, uh, the Shooting Sports Park.
Second.
With the term to expire December 31st, 2019.
Yep.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, all in support of the motion of appointing Jill Hamlin to fill that unexpired portion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 10, consideration of resolution number R 2019-2491, a resolution approving the execution of a lease renewal agreement between the Leeds Domestic Water Users Association and Washington County for their Rice Bank Building. And I'd be happy to, uh, speak to this. Washington County, uh, most people are familiar with the Wells Fargo Bank and the historic Wells Fargo properties, maybe less well-known, but still an important part of the historical lore of the Silver Reef area is the Rice Bank Building, which the county also owns. Uh, the Rice Bank Building, we have been leasing for, uh, this would be its third renewal to the Leeds Domestic Water Users Association. This has been very beneficial, in my opinion, uh, and I was county administrator when this was first initiated, because this actually provides a, uh, small cash flow for those properties that allows us to pay the utility and the water bills for the, uh, Wells Fargo Bank, which is a 501(c)(3), uh, operating a museum there on behalf of the county, on that county-owned property. And it's bringing in a substantial number of schoolchildren, visitors and tourists that like to see the historical property. And this makes it all really be a net zero game in terms of it not costing, uh, the county anything to, uh, own those properties and to make them available to our county's residents and areas' visitors. I would recommend, uh, approval of the renewal.
Absolutely.
I would make that motion and.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
It's a nice little building, I think having a good tenant like them.
They take care of it.
Take care of it.
Okay. All in support of resolution R 2019-2491, a resolution approving the execution of a lease renewal agreement between the Leeds Domestic Water Users Association and Washington County for their Rice Bank Building, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item number 11, discussion and consideration of purchasing water rights at Confluence Park.
Well, Chair, you know that, um, the Virgin River Land Trust has some holdings around the, the county and their, some of their board members approached us with the opportunity to consider purchasing some water rights they hold in the Confluence Park area. Um, to quote, I think it was Will Rogers, who said, "In the West, whiskey is for drinking and water is for fighting." Um, knowing full well that water rights are valuable to everyone and that they purchase them with the intent of looking to the future and their interest in that park is parallel with ours, not only for public use, but for preservation of some of the historic nature as well as the species that are there, et cetera, et cetera. Water plays a big role there and they would like to see if we'd be interested.
Do we have a price yet?
They, um, Eric, I'll let you, you've made an offer and.
Yeah, and, and we've been kind of back and forth. Um, and I, so I'm not aware of, like, and if you guys are comfortable, we can talk about that in an open meeting, we can close meeting and discuss specifics. Um, not sure how likely it would be to impact anything if we talked about it in an open.
They've, they've, they've made an offer though, and the offer, as I understand it, is basically 50% of the price water shares are selling for, plus $5,000, uh, which is, in my book, a very good offer. And they're extending that offer because of the inherent parallel interests county has, uh, preserving that land and so, uh, I, I think that we would just be on safe ground to entertain a motion, uh, that if it existed with that offer, that prove it. I'm not the attorney, you are.
That'd be great.
Well, that'd be, so yeah, I'm, I think that's, and we have it in the budget, uh, there's, and we have a, a line for the Confluence Park that I think would cover that, so it's not like it's outside of our budget by any stretch, but.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, that's a motion I second, or I, I think.
Make the motion, or did you make it?
Um, I think, I think we all three made it.
We're kind of running a haphazard meeting here, but it's, I don't know.
Well, the idea being too, that they can substantiate the ownership, they can verify through the state as well, a spring they're giving as part of the deal that isn't necessarily a free-flowing spring now, but that has the ability to be tapped in. Obviously, it's a registered spring as well, so all the legal, uh, backing of the shares, et cetera, will be counted out by our attorney.
Well, I think, I think the shares are held in the Laverkin Bench Canal Company, so they're.
Consistent with, we find everything, uh.
Yeah.
Is in order.
And, and well, yeah, as long as that's the case, then making the motion and I certainly second the motion or I'll make the motion, but I think it's already been made that we adopt or accept their, uh, offer.
All right, all in support of the extending an offer to purchase, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Mr. Whitehead, Public Works Report.
This would be the nicest public works report I've been able to give because I had a milkshake beforehand, so thank you.
Most summer's day, cool off.
Will allow me to go longer too, because I've been nourished by that milkshake, so how long do you want to go?
At least to halfway to the end of the road.
Okay. I've got a list of stuff here and I started to try and break them out by what we'd worked on second quarter of the year and what we're going to be working on the third quarter of the year. And the list is pretty much identical for most of that. We have a few things that transition out, but most of our work is maintenance work through the county and working on county properties and other facilities. So I'll start with the ones that'll transfer in and out at some point, what may seem like we've been working on some of these or with the organizations for a long time, that the actual jobs do change as we go through. So, uh, the first one we got is Gypson Wash Debris Basin Rehabilitation, that's over in Washington City, and this is actually in conjunction with NRCS Flood Control District. And you stop me if you want to know specifics on any of these, I'll just tell you where we're at so I can get through here quick. Uh, Warner Draw Debris Basin, this is another NRCS and Flood Control District project over, over by Washington City. Confluence Park, we've been working with the grants and engineering design and stuff that's been going on down in there. Uh, Pinto Bridge Engineering Bid Construction Management, that's with the Forest Service project and they're replacing the Pinto Bridge right now in Pinto. It had some defects underneath in one of the support beams and we're taking that out and putting a new bridge in now, so that'll be through for too long.
Is that going to help the residents of Pinto to?
They'll get a nice wooden bridge.
I don't know where I was there last night.
It, it meets the Forest Service new plan for operations and working in the forest. They want everything to be wood construction now and open bottoms, so this will fit that guideline too. It's a nice bridge, work's coming along pretty nice on it right now. Legacy park modifications, we've been working on a few of those, we still have a little bit more to work on for some changes you're making to the park out there. Colob Mountain Road issues, uh, we have three or four different roads on Colob Mountain, we're working through some issues up there as to right of ways and where they are in public or private. We'll have continuing issues like that, maybe in different parts of the county too. Uh, Dalton Wash right of way issues, we're working on some major road issues up there, it'll open up that Dalton Wash to a nicer road facility for everybody up there. Hopefully, we're nearing the end of some of these too. Shooting Sports Park maintenance and revisions from here on down, I think we'll be working on these pretty much any time of the year. I think we'll be working on these pretty much any time of the year for years to come. Shooting Sports Park maintenance and revisions, uh, we're in the process of looking at some revisions. It will be a major improvement to one of the venues in the Shooting Sports Park, both in safety and usability for the public, so it'll be a good outcome when we're there, it'll take a little while to get there. Uh, the rest of these are pretty much, uh, road issues we deal with on a regular basis. Uh, the crews are out mowing weeds right now. With all the rains we had this spring, we have a bumper crop of weeds along the right-of-ways, and we try and mow and keep those weeds back a safe distance from the road, so you have an opportunity to see if you have to pull off in an emergency situation, and also give you just a split second sight vision of an animal that may come out of the weeds that are off the side of the road and onto the road. Uh, they're moving around the main roads in the county now, doing that. Uh, road maintenance on, on all the exterior county roads, gravel roads, dirt roads, doing general grading and drainage work. Uh, spring was pretty wet, and about the time we'd get out to do the grading on there, it would rain again, kept us off, and so we're still working through that. Patching the oiled roads that went through the winter, suffered a little bit from all the water we had, trying to get those back into shape. Uh, we inherited the Lower Smith Mesa Road a while ago, it's about the only way to put it.
We were given back.
We were given back with, with the authority to go in and work on it too, so.
It was re-gifted.
Yes. The road department's been up working on that, they've been doing some, uh, drainage work to make sure the drainage goes where it's supposed to and not just stays on the road or under the road. And they've also been doing some skim patching to smooth the surface over on the road. And they will be chip sealing that road. First chip seal it's probably hadn't quite a while, try and bring it back into a better state. Try and keep it that way from now on, so it won't have all the potholes and everything else open up in it.
Ron and I went up there the first time you heard that you're getting it back. We were rolling rocks out of the way so we could continue to go on.
Yes.
So we were doing our own maintenance.
People that travel up there were very appreciative of us rolling the rocks off for them, but they're more appreciative of our road department being up there.
Absolutely.
Getting this road fixed up for them too. Uh, we're prepping all the roads we have planned for our chip seal projects this year, and we'll get into that list here in just a second. And the last thing we do, we've got planned for major projects, is to go out and chip seal those roads. We've modified that list, we took Highway ninety-one off of that list and put some other roads on it. Highway ninety-one is getting heavy traffic now because of the gorge. We're working on bridges in the gorge again, and at any given time, you can go out there and you'll have cars coming at you, almost a solid stream out of Arizona. Semis get backed up, they get slowed down going through the gorge, and the, the cars come up, and even semis, if they know where that road is, they cut off and come up over the hill. It's getting a lot of traffic on it right now, so. It's in good shape, we, we would have gone through and, and redid the chip seal on it this year, but we think it'll stand up, you know, to another, another year's wear and tear on it with all this traffic, and we can work on getting it in our system for next year again. And we don't actually have a list of them, but we get a lot of other projects that come through, as you guys well know, you bring most of them into us, so we get a lot of different, opportunity to work on different stuff, so we're pretty busy down there, so. You have any questions specifically on any of them before we go to chip seal?
No.
Chip seal, let me just briefly tell you what we've got here. You want to know where we're at, or you just want to know total mileage and cost?
Have that list.
I've got a list, you might just summarize mileage and cost.
Uh, we show a total mileage on there of twenty point five miles, but there's five and a half miles that is getting a double coat of chip seal. It's an area that we're doing some test work on, some of the road mill asphalt we've laid down, so we're doing a double coat chip seal on that, so it actually totals out to twenty, uh, six miles. And if you take the total cost of seven hundred and sixteen thousand one hundred and thirty-four dollars and divide that out by twenty-six miles, it figures out to about, uh, twenty-seven thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars a mile. And that's our best estimates on the amount of oil to use, chip to use, and the price of oil when we sign the contract, which, by the way, I have here with me, so the next opportunity we have for getting this on an agenda, we need to get these contracts signed, so our oil's locked in on that too, so. We didn't have it in time to get it into you guys, so I'll run it through the court auditor's office and get a, you know, started on the purchase on that, but we need to get approved for you, and it's just the, uh, price for their asphalt and the tonnage we've ordered, it's not our contract, it's just signing that saying yes, we'll be good for that when they deliver it, so. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron, appreciate you.
Pass that appreciation on to all of your, uh, road department and others who work hard.
One quick question, Chair. The gunlock box culverts that we looked at?
Still there.
Yeah, they're still there, they look like dominoes. Um, I know that they built that bypass road and the lake is full. What's kind of looking forward, not necessarily what you alone are doing, but the water district as well?
Haven't heard of anything different the water district's doing. Uh, we're waiting for the flow on the Santa Clara River to go down a little bit, so we can and the.
Divert.
And the environmental restrictions on there to go, so we can divert the water away from the box culverts, then we'll uh, move in and reset those box culverts at a different grade, set them down a little lower, and we'll build the road back up over them, where it'll go there, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Any commission comments?
No. Happy Independence Day.
Yeah.
Fly.
All right. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda, so we will adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.